So I'm going to stay masked up today. I'm going to try to speak clearly and through the microphone here. And so, thank you so much for coming this afternoon. We are here in Nuñez County Commissioners' courtroom, and I'm Barbara Canales, Nuñez County Judge. We're using technology here today to communicate with Public Health Director Annette Rodriguez. And also with us here today is Dr. Mary Dell Peterson of Driscoll Children's Hospital, and also Dr. Byrd of CBI and Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. I do have prepared comments, but I want to start off with something really important because I feel like if I say it's really important, then you'll hear it. The hours for tomorrow's testing are going to go to 5:00 PM. And we're sure about that, right? Okay, because it, we had, I had originally saw 7:00 PM, but that is today. Today's drive-through testing is through 7:00 PM, and that is accurate. But tomorrow, we're on an abbreviated schedule so that we can get these lab tests performed, you know, in a timely manner, and we will shut off tomorrow at 5:00 PM. And I will tell you that I just got off the phone, and there are over 800 people that we are going to service here in the queue today. If that gives you any indication of why I said it was the last press conference a few days ago, and now it's not, that is why. And you're going to hear more about that. Okay, I also want to address some questions before my prepared comments because I've been fielding calls all day. And I'm hoping by having Dr. Peterson here, she can also maybe fill in blanks for me from the medical side as well as Annette Rodriguez. But I've been having a lot of calls, doctors, for monoclonal antibody therapy that works on Omicron. You'll recall that the state of Texas had a rapid infusion center at the Richard Orchard Fairgrounds. That is not, I repeat, not there anymore. And the state is no longer utilizing those, that particular drug in their state-run rapid infusion centers. However, if your doctor believes that treatment is right for you, you will be able to most likely still access that through your doctor. What's very important is that we have ordered the doses that we do believe work on Omicron, based on the data and the science. And we, I ordered these through a public health district. Annette and I roundtabled on this last week. On the 23rd, the order was placed. Boy, am I glad we did that. When are we expecting it? We hope very soon. These new antibodies treatments come through the state of Texas. So, again, I just got off the phone. We're going to get an update on these new monoclonal antibody treatments and when they, these doses will arrive. But I just want the citizens to know, the residents to understand, that they were ordered on the morning of the 23rd. So, again, that's what preparedness is all about. We're going to really welcome them, but I need you to know, all of you listening out there, that there's no wonder drug cure perfection, except for what we know works best, and that's the vaccine. So although these treatments are going to be very welcome to have here, we're going to talk about the behavior and the tools we have to fight this Omicron right now. And again, just to remind everybody, that's vaccination and boosters. Okay, so now let's go to these prepared remarks that were thoughtfully planned out based on new information and data. So as I said earlier in this conference last week, I said, let's hope that this is the last COVID briefing of 2021. But I also reminded the audience that we would work to keep our residents and the media posted of any breaking news via our social media channels. And I want to remind everybody that those are up and running, particularly our websites, nuacesco.com, cityofcorpuschristi.com, as well as nuacesknows.com. And I said we would call a press conference if we needed to, and we did need to. So look at what has happened between last week and today. I felt it was necessary to provide an update as we enter into this New Year's Eve weekend. As you know, we've been dealing with Omicron variant of the coronavirus throughout our country and our state, and it arrived in the United States just after Thanksgiving. And we are learning quickly, sometimes the hard way, about this virus. And some of what we learned has resulted in the CDC changing guidelines for both isolation and quarantine. We know that the Omicron variant spreads very quickly. And we know that the people who are infected are most able to transmit this virus to others early in their infection. And what does that mean? Well, it means unfortunately, two days before the onset of symptoms, and most likely the first three days of when the patient is symptomatic. And we've also seen that those who are infected with Omicron do have better outcomes if they are vaccinated, and even better if they have recently had their booster shot. So if you don't have Omicron, and you haven't had your booster, run and go get it at La Palmera Mall. So the new recommendations, while they aren't necessarily easy to rattle off at the top of our heads, they are designed to help prevent the spread of the virus when people are at the greatest likelihood of transmission. That's what they're aimed for. And of course, they recognize that COVID is a short, that for some people, not all, but for some people, COVID could be a short illness with mild symptoms. So it's a balancing act. That's what the CDC has basically provided to us. A balance to protect the public while allow people to resume their lives and their work. The guideline change have changed, and the rules for isolation and quarantine have changed with them. And so I'm going to go over these quickly, and we're going to call on Annette Rodriguez to really give us a full presentation. But isolation relates to what happens to you when you are confirmed infected. You're going to isolate, you're going to separate, you're going to go to the other side of the house. You're going to use your outdoors. You're going to completely try and keep yourself from infecting others that you love. Quarantine relates to people for people exposed to a person with COVID-19. And again, Annette's going to go over all of these new recommendations in detail. I want to go over highlights. The important thing is that these guidelines are not a one-size-fits-all rule. And for those with COVID, the isolation clock starts when you are asymptomatic or are resolving 24 hours without a fever, okay? So for those who are exposed and must quarantine, the quarantine time is based on your vaccine status. So you are going to get rewarded, basically, whether or not you've had been vaccinated. How long has it been since you've completed your initial vaccination and whether you've had a booster shot? So it's three prongs that's going to determine what your status is. Whether or not you've been vaccinated, how long it's been since you completed your first vaccination, and whether or not you've had a booster shot. And again, why do they do this? Well, it's pretty clear to me that these guidelines are based on one solid fact. Vaccines work, and they help prevent getting COVID-19. And they help reduce symptoms if you do get COVID-19. And they can shorten the duration of your illness if you have COVID. So CDC's updated recommendations for isolation and quarantine balance what we know about the spread of the virus and the protection provided by the vaccine and the booster. And this is all about getting us safer and being able to continue our daily lives. And I don't have to explain why prevention is the best option. It makes sense, common sense. I'm always writing these words down. We have tools. Well, you know what the greatest tool we have is? Right here, use it. This is the greatest tool God gave us. And that is our brain to make good decisions based on solid information. So get vaccinated, get boosted, wear a mask in public indoor settings and in areas of substantial and high community transmission. And listen, take a test if you feel like you have symptoms so that you can what? Isolate quickly and prevent the spread. This is all about public health. You know, I've been giving a lot of thought to these words, "public health." It's exactly what we're practicing right now. We need to protect one another. I would definitely also underscore the fact that we now know that the majority of virus transmission is really happening early, early in its course. And, you know, this means that you've got to pay close attention to your own health. I know that every time I think my throat is sore, I'm thoughtful, you know? Is that really for a long period of time? Let's be self-aware because developing symptoms will help, I mean, I'm sorry, when you can diagnose that you have developed symptoms, you can get isolated quicker, and you can also get tested. And there's always just this natural impulse to tough it out, or to say it's allergies, or I'm going to feel better by tomorrow. Let's see how it goes. But we know that could be the very worst thing you could do for our public health. So these first few days are when you are most likely to transmit the virus to others if you've been exposed. So again, let's get vaccinated and watch your health, isolate. And here's the big one. If you've been exposed to someone with COVID-19, check to see what you should do to quarantine. As I said last week, we'll be watching these case counts. I know that Annette's about to show them to you, and they've gone up dramatically. But pay close attention to also our hospitalizations and our ICU bed space. But I can tell you this, we have free testing available for you, and we're going to have it next week as well. The one thing I have not been able to confirm, but I promise to get it to the media tomorrow, is what we're going to do for New Year's Eve on Friday, when everybody is literally off. City is on vacation, the county does have a designated holiday, and I'm working on it right now to find staff so we can find a partner or ourselves to continue testing. But the lab has to be open as well. So this is why we made a big push for 9:00 to 7:00, as well as tomorrow from 9:00 to 5:00. We know how easy this variant is to transmit, and we do know and recognize, acknowledge that many times you're going to have mild symptoms. But look, there's going to be people who get COVID and need to go to the hospital. And the Omicron variant is as bad as the original coronavirus and the Delta variant if you're one of those people that falls prey to it. So as the year closes, I'm reflecting on the lives that have been lost. And I think of the 1,312 people that were our neighbors, our friends, our coworkers. They were people we loved, admired, and cared about. And I really want to see that number stop. I really don't ever want to see another tick up again. And yet I know that's not realistic. So my wish for this new year is that that number goes down in the history books as our grand total. And that's it. And we can do that if we keep each other safe. But what I do know, going back to those tools that I'm always talking about, is that we have everything we need right here. And if we'll just follow it, have you ever heard of "practice what we preach"? You know, get those vaccines, get those boosters, isolate if you become positive, watch and monitor your health closely, follow the quarantine guidelines that you're about to hear. And please, do everything you can to help slow the spread of the virus. I always believe that the glass is half-full. We can slow it, we can be hopeful. And I believe that we can even stop it if we're all willing to do our part. And that's the best thing that could possibly happen to end this year and begin a new year. I do want to be thoughtful and say I'm wishing all of you a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. But I would like to urge each and every one of you to be very thoughtful about your New Year's Eve plans, please. It's a painful day for me when I spend all day talking to parents who have their children ill, that are very nervous. They're worried, even if they're not experiencing symptoms. This is normal. My own child was ill during Christmas. I don't really even think we, probably the first year in my life, that I didn't celebrate Christmas with my children. I know what it means as a mother to be worried about your children. And I feel the same way about our significant others, our spouses, our coworkers. I'm worried about protecting this courthouse, our courts, our jail, our healthcare centers. And I wish that we could say that one person worrying would make the difference. But it won't. But what will is if we come together again. I just finished reading this amazing book that I brought to remind me to say this at the end, which now I did. It's called "Let Us Dream," and it's by His Holiness Pope Francis. And in the very beginning of the book, he basically remarks that through this crisis, if you are truly committed, if you've truly felt this crisis, you have been changed by it. I know that we are all changed, but we can be changed for the better. And so let us continue to commit to each other and to our public health of our community by staying vigilant. There's going to be so many years and moments and days for celebration. Let's curb this Omicron variant now. We had over 800 people testing in one spot today. We have got to knock those numbers down. With your help, with a lot of good practices, I know we can do this together. Thank you. Let me introduce a Dr. Annette, I mean, listen to me, Doc. I've already made you a Dr. Annette Rodriguez, who's going to go over this flow chart. And then we'll hear from Dr. Peterson and Dr. Byrd. And I'm going to warn you right now. I think Dr. Byrd's going to come in, and he's going to tell you what will happen if we don't do the things that we need to do to curb the spread. And the numbers that I have seen are terrible numbers. And that's what happens without intervention. We are the intervention that we seek. And so when you hear his numbers, please know that we have the ability to curb, to curb what these terrible predictions could be. And again, Annette, thank you for joining us via Zoom. And we're going to turn to you right now.
Thank you, Judge. As expected, we are starting to see the beginning of the fourth COVID-19 wave here in Nuñez County. This is concerning, but not surprising due to the emergence of the Omicron variant. We anticipated that cases would go up in a community where we are gathering, where we've had recent travel, and the new Omicron variant has entered the United States in early December. Today, we reported 130 new COVID-19 cases. This is up from a few weeks ago when we were in the 20s. We were daily reporting of 20, 24, 28, 30 cases. Today, it was 130 new cases. Nuñez County positivity rate yesterday was above 30% and is continuing to climb daily. There have been increased demand locally for testing over the last few days, as Judge Canales mentioned. Due to long lines at our testing sites, we have extended the hours for testing till 7:00 PM tonight at the Old Memorial Hospital. And we will run again tomorrow till 4:00 PM to the first 600 patients due to testing limitations. This is free to the public. The new Omicron variant has taken over as the dominant strain here in the United States, and we are in the middle of an exponential surge of Omicron cases locally. I say this because our call volume at the health district has increased. We used to be at 200 calls a few weeks ago, 200 calls per week at the health district. Now we are receiving well over 800 calls per week. Our drive-through demands have increased, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, where a few weeks ago, we had less than 20 people coming through the drive-through daily. Today, we've had over 600 people that came in to get tested, to find out if they're COVID-19 positive. We currently have 16 samples that we have sent out. The Department of State Health Services asked that we send 5% of our positives to get geno sequenced. And so we have 16 samples that are still out and have not come back. So we have not seen any reports of Omicron here locally. But like the Delta variant, we are still reporting that we have Omicron even before we see that test because we could tell by what's happening in the community with the cases going up and the demand for testing as well. The unvaccinated individuals, whether you're young or older, they're still going to be the most susceptible to the Omicron virus. This variant infects around 70 times faster than Delta and the original COVID-19 strain. And Dr. Byrd will talk more about this in a few minutes. We also believe that Omicron seems to be less severe, but I want to caution everybody because it depends on the vulnerability of your population. So it could be that we have more severity here in Nuñez County versus what we saw in South Africa. But whether Omicron is less severe or not, we have seen it spread like wildfire. And this can stretch and challenge our health facilities in our community, which I think Dr. Peterson will talk about. We must protect our hospital capacity, not just for the COVID patients, but for other medical emergencies and those that did get vaccinated. Right now, any individual five years and older is eligible to be vaccinated. You can go to the cctexas.com website for vaccination clinic times and locations, as well as nuacesknows.com. Request for monoclonals, the judge mentioned this as well. We have gotten many calls, people requesting monoclonals because now they're positive for COVID-19. So what we know is that the state stopped monoclonals, and the monoclonals that we had were for the Delta variant. These were Regeneron, Regenco. And so they are looking at sending us new monoclonals. These are monoclonals that are specific to help fight the Omicron disease. But they tell us that they will not be arriving until the middle to the end of January. So we are going to have to wait for those monoclonals to arrive. But like Judge Canales also mentioned, please reach out to your primary physician. If you're COVID positive and you're worried about having a severe outcome, talk to your primary care physician, and they should be able to help you. CDC has also updated their recommendations to reflect what we know about infection and exposure in the context of vaccination, booster doses, and the new Omicron variant. So if you test positive for COVID-19, again, that's when you isolate. Everybody has to isolate for five days, everybody. It's no longer the 14, it's no longer the 10, it's five days. So if you're COVID-19 positive, you have to isolate yourself from other family members, from the rest of the world, for five days, okay? So, but in five days, if you are still having symptoms, then you have to continue to isolate yourself until your symptoms resolve. And then once you are able to go out, so if you're well on day five and you're able to go out on day six, you still have to wear a properly fitting mask when you go out for the next five days because the incubation period is still 10 days. So CDC did this in an effort to keep the economy going. We do know that we're going to have many, many cases, and we do know that the economy needs to continue to exist and survive. So that's why that was done. If you were exposed to someone with COVID-19, that's when we tell you you have to go into quarantine. The only individuals that do not have to quarantine are those that have received their booster vaccine. So that means you've had your two MRNAs, and six months later, you had your booster. Or you had your one J&amp;J, and two months later, you had your booster. And now you're close to somebody, and they said, oh, by the way, I just found out I'm COVID-19 positive. You do not have to quarantine. But you do still have to wear a mask for 10 days. And so they want to make sure that you don't pick up that virus because we're seeing breakthrough cases. So you still have to wear your mask. The only thing you don't have to do is you don't have to quarantine. For everybody else, that means anybody that does not have their vaccines, does not have their boosters, has not gotten vaccinated, they have to quarantine for five days. That's for everybody else. After those five days, if they haven't gotten sick, they need to continue to wear their mask around anybody for five additional days. They also ask that you test on day five to see if you actually have picked up the virus. Of course, if you develop symptoms at any time, we recommend you get tested and you stay home. So how do we protect ourselves? I mean, that sounds, you know, like a lot of cases, a lot of people are going to get sick. How do we protect ourselves? Again, the best protection is going to be getting vaccinated. If it's time for you to get your booster and you're eligible, please get your booster. That's your protection there. Wear a properly fitted mask covering your nose and mouth. Stay six feet away from others. Avoid crowds and poorly ventilated spaces. Test to prevent the spread to others, especially if you're traveling. Make sure that you test. Wash your hands often. Cover your cough and your sneezes. Clean and disinfect as much as you can. Let your house breathe, ventilate that house, and monitor your health daily. Remember, the whole reason we don't want the virus to spread is because the more it spreads, the more opportunity the virus has to further mutate into something more transmissible, and the next time, it may even be more severe. I urge everyone, protect yourself, protect those children, and please do not take this variant lightly. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Annette. And now we're going to hear from Dr. Mary Dell Peterson, Driscoll Children's Hospital.
Thank you, Judge Canales. I'm the Chief Operating Officer and Executive Vice President at Driscoll Children's Hospital. And I can give you an update on what we're seeing on the children's side. We are seeing our emergency departments and quick care clinics fill up with a lot of children with a variety of ailments, but a lot of respiratory disease is out there. COVID, we're seeing an increase in cases this week. I just pulled the numbers. We've tested, we have 114 children who are positive. And I would say, let's see, 66 of those were in the over-five age group. So once again, children can be vaccinated, you know, down to age five. And we're certainly not seeing the vaccination rates like we should. And my particular concerns, the children that we have in the hospital with COVID right now are children that have underlying conditions, or they're very young. So how you protect those children, the children that are old enough to be vaccinated, you vaccinate. Children that are too young to be vaccinated, you vaccinate the people that are around them. So all the adults in the household typically. In our Delta wave, that's where we saw children getting the viruses from their adult family members. So we do have a way of preventing, you know, COVID. We are seeing more breakthrough infections, as was anticipated, with the Omicron variant. As Annette Rodriguez said, we haven't actually gotten results back that says it's Omicron. But we're, you know, pretty certain at this point with the, you know, what we're seeing in the state of Texas, that this probably does represent Omicron variant that we're seeing with a very high transmissible rate. We are hopeful that, you know, we will see less hospitalizations because, as Dr. Byrd will talk about in a few minutes, hospital capacity is challenging right now. You know, I probably shouldn't speak for on the adult side, but, you know, when you have a nationwide shortage of healthcare workers, that decreases the amount of patients you can take care of. And we've certainly seen that decrease in the workforce. And then you add on to that, that we are having to isolate staff who, you know, obviously live in community and families that also get COVID. And so that affects our workforce as well. So we really are asking everybody to do what's been reiterated many times. I have all boys, they love football. I've learned all the football terminology, or at least some of it. And I know one of the terminologies that's used is about the weapons. So what are the weapons that we have? Well, we've got a big weapon that we didn't have really in full force a year ago at this time, and that is vaccinations. So that's the first and foremost weapon that will keep you hopefully out of the hospital or really sick with COVID. The second weapon we have are the public health measures that you've heard so much about. So it's about wearing the mask, especially around in public areas, trying not to be around a whole bunch of people. I know it's the holiday, and it's... I know it's the holiday and it's really tempting, but that would be the other recommendation on that. And the third one that unfortunately isn't quite here yet, but I am hopeful about, in, you know, hopefully a month or two, and it may be after our Omicron surge, but I'm sure we'll have another surge of some other variant in the future. And that is the new antivirals that are coming out, and these are pills that can be taken that we believe will be very effective, at least against hospitalization, as long as they're taken within the first two or three days. So we're really hopeful about that. I know that we're looking at some distribution in the beginning. It's going to be limited to really high-risk people, and that would be people that, you know, have had transplants or are very immunosuppressed, the very elderly with clinical risk factors, because I think it's going to be in short supply. I know Judge Canales already talked about the monoclonal antibodies. We do not have any right now that are effective for the Omicron variant. We're hoping that the state will be able to provide some distribution of the one that is effective, so chivromid, but I'm not sure when that's going to come in. There is a lot of information on the Department of State Health Services website where you can also track some of that. That's pretty much all I have. I hope everybody has a great New Year. I'm actually, even though we're having to deal with another surge again, I am so much more hopeful than I was last year, because I think we understand better how to prevent and fight this illness. So please stay safe and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. We're going to have Dr. Bird come up, and, Dr. Bird, do you have slides that Connie needs to queue up? So she'll queue them up, and I'm glad you mentioned, Dr. Peterson, about the pill that are showing so much promise for our New Year, but just know, as you said, you know, these are, need to be manufactured, so it's going to take some time. So while there's all this great news, there's also reason to help, you know, mitigate this wave, and we can do it in knowing that there's a great promise in the not-so-distant future.
All right, there we go. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Chris Bird. I'm here to give you the weekly pandemic report from the TAMICC Informatics and Modeling Team. Next slide. We have two objectives to address your concerns and questions. I think there's a lot of concerns and questions right now, and to enable, click, enable evidence-based decision-making on behalf of our local leaders. And again, I think that this is something that's important right now. Next slide. So let's get right into it. The projections. So I do want to let everybody know that local medical professionals and local leaders were given projections about a week ago now, and this is the first time that I've been able to present it to you here in the community. And so we have three scenarios, and you've seen me do this before. We have the scenario where we do nothing. We don't wear masks, we don't social distance, we just go out, go about our lives, have New Year's parties the way we would, like it's 2019, and just live our lives as normal. If we do this, we're going to see more COVID cases at the peak than we've ever seen throughout the whole pandemic. You can pretty much stack up the peak values from the three waves and add them together, and it wouldn't be quite as much as what we're projecting for the single Omicron wave if we do nothing. So two, what happens to that tall red wave if we wear masks, if we social distance, if we maybe, you know, cancel this year's New Year's Eve party? Well, if we do that, then there's a drastic decline in the peak of the number of cases that we're projected to see here in the coastal bend, down to only about 1,250 instead of over 3,000. That's still higher than any peak that we've seen thus far. And then if you're wondering where the third scenario is, it's underneath the second scenario. They have the exact same avoidance and mask use to reduce transmission. The difference is in hospitalization rates. We'll talk about that in the next slide. Okay, so the number of inpatients that we're expecting to see at the peak if we do nothing is higher than the Delta peak. Now, if we do things to reduce transmission, we can cut that approximately in half, down to under 400 people in the hospitals in the coastal bend at the peak. And we have our third scenario, which is the same as scenario two, except with a different and lower hospitalization rate. And I read an article today written by somebody who has to do what I do, and they said that calculating these hospitalization rates is like calculus, because there's so many moving parts to it. I will attest that that is true, and that's why I wasn't able to quite have it ready for the presentation last week. And so the red and the gold curves are the calculus curves. The blue curve is the simple, basic curve. Now, I'm hoping that the blue curve is more accurate in terms of hospitalization rates. But these different curves, they represent the range of what we know right now based upon the information that's available, and if we're lucky, we can get away with maybe a peak of 200 people in the hospital at the peak due to the Omicron variant. Next slide. All right, and for the ICU, the same sort of outcomes if we do nothing versus if we do something versus if we do something and we get lucky. I like the we do something and get lucky scenario. And the thing that we really need to pay attention to, and it's been alluded to already, next slide, is that it's not just about how many people we expect to be in the hospitals relative to the last peak or the peak before that. It's how much capacity do we have in the hospital now? And the capacity that we have in the hospitals now in the coastal bend is about 30% lower than the capacity was before the Delta peak and wave that we went through. And for the rest of the pandemic, the hospital capacity was up at about that 1,750 level, and now we're below 1,250. So it's not just about keeping the peak lower, it's balancing how many beds are left in the hospital versus how many people are going to get sick. Next slide. And so this leads me to be calculating hospital vacancy, and it's quite low right now. It's at 12%. This is across the coastal bend, across all hospitals, and that means that there's only a little bit of leeway there before this Omicron surge really kicks in. And it is going exponential right now. It is kicking in, and you can expect to see these case numbers. It went from 80 to 130 over the past couple of days. It's going to go to several hundred, you know, very shortly, if not tomorrow, a few days from now, based upon other locations. Next slide. So summary, the Omicron variant is here, the wave is starting. We can see, we can tell that the cases are being driven by the Omicron variant, because they're increasing exponentially now. Cases and hospitalizations are increasing. Click. The projected peak cases and hospitalizations are reduced if we choose to reduce them, if we choose to wear masks, if we choose to social distance. Get vaccinated. Somebody might wonder, and I see this a lot, kind of in the news or on social media, well, why is this happening if we have the vaccines? Well, you should have seen what it was going to look like if we didn't have the vaccines. It would be a disaster no matter what we did. So now, the vaccines have gotten us into a situation, or if we do a little extra, do a little bit of masking, and the Omicron variant is so fast that we don't have to do it for very long. It looks like South Africa peaked and started coming down within a month, and the same thing seems to be happening in other locations around the world. So our decisions affect the Omicron outcome, and we can flatten this wave one more time. And hospital vacancy is low, and that's the reason why we really want to do this. Do we want to bank on we're going to have that great outcome of a really low hospitalization rate from Omicron? We want to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. Okay, last slide. So, next slide. So how do you combat Omicron? You avoid. Avoid crowded areas. This is going to reduce your exposure. Two, you mask. This reduces your probability of getting infected. Three, you vaccinate. This is going to reduce you acquiring severe symptoms. If you get boosted on top of the vaccination, then you're going to avoid getting sick at all. And then lastly, but not least, if you notice that you have symptoms, isolate and test. Now, I've seen a lot of news articles recently about how do you know if you have flu or the cold or COVID? I've got a simple answer. You go and you get tested. That's how you figure it out. Because pretty much, you might have symptoms and you think, oh, this is like a cold. But if it's COVID, and it very well could be, then you could be infecting other people who are at a higher risk to be infected, or we're allowing this pandemic to continue and to potentially spawn the next variant. We want to keep the number of cases low to decrease the probability of another variant mutating during this Omicron curve. So that's all I have for today. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to the judge.
Okay, so we are going to conclude the press conference. You got an overview, you got the details with regards to Director Rodriguez's summary of the new CDC guidance. You can get a glimpse into what's happening at our pediatric hospitals. I myself did a touch point with both HCA and Christus yesterday and again today, and everything that Dr. Peterson said is just absolutely spot on. We don't want to see these ERs full of people who are testing, because it's going to hurt our ability to get in there for those illnesses that also need tending. And I'll tell you, Dr. Bird, the big takeaway for me as the emergency manager here is just this 30% reduction in hospital capacity. It's just a game changer when you're starting from behind. And so that is why I thought today was important. I hope that those of you at home and online took away some good information. I know that national news is also incredibly informative, but sometimes it feels good to get it from your local experts like Dr. Peterson, like Annette Rodriguez. And if we can answer any questions for you in the media, we're happy to do so at this time. Okay, perfect. We will stay in touch with you, because I do want to see what availability for testing there will be, if any, on Friday, New Year's Eve. But I can tell you, next week, we're planning on ramping up every day, and that will be very welcome when we have full staff again. Thank you, by the way, to Inland Parks, to Christus Spawn, who is helping us perform the swabbing at the Old Memorial Site on Morgan Street. I just cannot say enough of, you know, here we are at the end of another year, and what would we do without the people that we count on every single day to do their job and to never complain and to be there early and stay late? We are eternally grateful in, once again, in 2021, as our year comes to an end, and I have no doubt that they will be there for all of us to keep us safe in '22. Thanks again for being here, and again, please have a very safe, but very happy and healthy New Year.